Okay, it being 7:30, I suppose we should open the meeting. So, for the record, anybody else listening, this meeting is being recorded. And we could, I suppose we could start with a couple, well, we have a time specific item for
Eight o'clock.
Yeah, for the extension of that press what states there. So the question is where should we? Okay. I estimate that the Shea Lane discussion may last longer than the half hour we have between now. As much as I would like to let people who come in not have to wait that long. What's your feeling Danielle? Do you think we should?
I mean, it's possible that it might. I hate to keep everyone waiting. I I wouldn't object to starting with that and then continue the hearing at eight and then go back to it.
Okay, all right.
That's what I would do.
Okay, then let's, let's, let's do that. So in the beginning here, we would, I don't know, do we want a little preamble to open this up? Danielle, do you want to just have this quick discussion about what's transpired the last two weeks or something?
Sure. At the last meeting, we talked about some remediation, some possible solutions such as, you know, check dance and what have you to try to address, you know, the fact that we have this runoff going from nine Shea Lane onto the Butters on Nutter Road over the last couple of weeks, you know, you and our consulting engineer, Mr. Gian Grande and I and David Murray have met. Or two of whom have sent us, you know, photos and videos of the problem from, you know, the very rainy weekend that we had. So, you know, you and Warren, you and I and Dave Gian Grande had met to talk about, you know, Dave writing up a report with recommendations for how we ought to address this. Dave has given us a report with recommendations. That report is in your file, it's in the share file. I don't know if if you would like to have, you know, Dave talk through his recommendations for how this should be addressed.
Sure. And he may be, Dave, you may be able to just you know, just briefly recap part of what's in your report and go just and then go pretty much right to the recommendations at the bottom. And then I'm gonna, then what I would like to do at that point is definitely is after hearing the recommendations that we have listened to. Site has a hill in the middle and for the most part it drains that piece of the watershed northeast towards what is now lot nine. And so as lot nine was being constructed, the temporary plunge pool had to be relocated to facilitate the home and the septic system and other things. So a lot of grading occurred on lot nine as part of that. Um, so with that, this, this late, late summer through the summer and into the fall, we had a couple of occurrences, as Danielle mentioned, that we now had again, it had been a couple of years, but now we had accidental approachment of that runoff and silt onto those abutting property. At one time, it was three different abutters. It appears that the Quinlands are no longer getting runoff. I haven't heard anything from them, but several years ago they were also being affected. So now, now we have been taking a look at what the development of lot nine means to to this as well as what's happening in terms of the entire watershed, which is the subdivision. So more recently, the, some changes were made. The Board of Health reviewed the septic design, reviewed some the, the slopes and some grading. We have been trying to work with the, the butter, the both of Butters as well as the homeowners at lot nine and their design engineer as well as the subdivision developer, Dave Murray. And so we're getting to the point where now everything is starting to come to conclusion. And we still have a problem that is persisting. So like I had mentioned before, this is a process and now we've got to make sure that we address this prior to the end of the project. So so I went out, I met out in the field, been out a couple of times, pretty much for every major storm over the summer and fall, I was out there and I think the Butters have seen me out there a number of times trying to understand the situation and the contributory factors. So as part of my recommendation, I feel strongly that we need to understand the slopes and, and the grading on lot nine. We need to have a better understanding of when the pond is discharging. We have been out there on several occasions where the pond is not discharging, but but yet we still have localized the puddling and flooding. So we looked at, number one, we looked at the pond, the pond was outlet was called for a level spreader. That level spreader would take what we call a point source discharge from a pipe and then re-spread it over a 20, 30, 40 foot area. So it would more closely emulate natural drainage running off into a wooded section. We've asked Mr. Murray to make those changes. That was part of our recommendation. We also need to know what's happening in and around this area. So my recommendation was to to provide a as-built plan so we can understand the slopes and understand how it was graded relative to the original subdivision plan and relative to the approved septic design plan. Some other things that we noticed, there was, there were some infiltrators put in in lot nine. Yet not a large percentage of the roof drains were actually tied in to, to that area. So we feel that some of this superficial runoff can be directed towards these infiltrators if the, if the gutters and downspouts are brought to those infiltrators. And so that was another another recommendation. So all in all, one would be the level spreader. Another one would be the, the as-built plan. Another recommendation was to have, we asked for some computations to be done. They did do computations for the sizing of these infiltrators for the roof drains. However, they did not do, reanalyze the, the entire watershed that contributes to this area. So we're asking that we have a registered professional engineer in the Commonwealth, provide drainage comps and evaluate that as well. And the last piece was the, that the downspouts be in gutters be added and connected into the, into the infiltration system along with the, the level spreader being constructed as shown on the subdivision plan. So with all of these elements, we're hopeful that we, you know, we will see a drastic improvement. And then again, everybody needs to keep in mind that the, the runoff characteristics on the property are still different than they will be in a couple of years when everything is, the grass is growing and the trees are working and the, the curving is in and we've, we've got even a greater opportunity to direct the water. So in a nutshell, that those, those four recommendations, again, to recap, the drainage computations, the as-built plan, the level spreader tying in roof drains and and managing the on-site runoff. So Thank you, Dave. So I'd like to give, I know that the last time we, there were a number of people that wanted to make comments and have a chance to do that. So anybody that would open this up to the public to, to actually have some comments. And so you didn't get a chance last time. So if you could let me know that you would like to comment, I will please let me know. Yes, sir. You want to comment?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Peter Tassi from Nutter Road.
Yes.
I just had a couple of questions based on what David just reported. I hadn't seen that. So first one is the drainage around lot nine that's currently there. Could you address that? Is there anything going to be changed with that? Because ultimately it all goes to that same problem area.
Okay, what my, what we're recommending and what David said, you know, I guess he didn't, he didn't really get into it, but, but he, his there were two things. One, he says he's want the as-built and the as-built, he thinks that we should ask for an as-built because the as-built will show the current conditions as they exist. And then we'd compare those to the design, to the original design and any flaws in that would have to be fixed. I mean, that's basically the answer and I, in my estimation, you know, just from looking at it, there's a bit that needs to be done there to bring that, that site into compliance with the original septic, with the original subdivision design. More than a little it needs to be done. I looked at those swales and those and I went, I went out there with them to go over this whole thing and it, and it occurs to me that I don't see any engineering associated with any of that work. So, so the work that was done, somebody needs to, some engineer needs to put a name on it and say that it's okay, but clearly it's not. So that means some changes are probably going to have to be made in that. And that's what Dave alluded to when he said, before you can make, you need a basis to make your changes from. So the as-built plan becomes the basis. Okay, this is what's happening now, but this is what's supposed to happen. And then we can make comparisons and say, okay, you need to do this to fix the problems. So, you know, in engineer speak, that's what he said in a roundabout way.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page because I agree 100%. Just a point of interest, the plunge pool that David mentioned about in his report there. Yeah, that did work for, you know, a few days. It wasn't a long occurrence. My pool, just for the record, has been filled with silt four or five times. Just that in itself. So, you know, over the course of five, six years, it's happened numerous times besides the flooding. So it's obviously an ongoing issue, but
Well, Mr. Tassi, there was, there was a comment made to me that, that somebody looked at that over the weekend when it rained and there wasn't any water. And yet you guys sent me pictures of the water flowing over the weekend. So I thought that was great. That gave me all the answers I needed to continue to push on. Okay? I'm glad you did. Pictures are a thousand words.
Yep. Just wanted to say I appreciate you going out there because that was going to be a suggestion last week or two weeks ago, but whatever.
Yeah, when I, somebody actually approached me at a store and asked me about that. And so I came back to the woods and I want to know everything. And so that's why we're here now.
Right. With Zoom and everything, it makes it a little more difficult and getting that bird's eye view, I think is a huge help to us anyway.
Yes. Well, we're, we're on it now. So
That's a good thing. We appreciate it. And I just had another question. It's for basically down the road, but I wanted to ask it tonight while I had yous here. The issues on my property where the mud and silt has washed through and washed out my lawn and I've got mud on my side of the stone wall and old silt fence and all that. Who would be responsible to, you know, clean that and re-lum and grade it and seed it and all that?
Well, it would not be a planning board matter. It would be a civil issue in my estimation from, from experience, but this is what I'm told. So that would be a civil issue that you would discuss with, with the, with whoever owned the property that contributed to that. And that probably would be the developer at this point.
Okay, I was just curious because I really didn't.
No, that's generally how it would work.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, no problem. Okay. So anybody else would like to comment?
I know that Ms. Lally didn't have a chance to comment last time. And I just want to make sure I see you've unmuted.
Yep. I just, all we're interested in is making sure this problem gets addressed, not just keep putting Band-Aids on it so that every single time it rains. I'm continually told, well, that was, you know, unprecedented rain. I need everybody to understand that when it rains now, that's what it does. It's unprecedented rain. And I have continually and my husband and my neighbor have continually cleaned our properties and been told, you know, when I listened to the last meeting, I heard comments such as, you know, well, what I've done has made it better. It's better. It's not better. I never had water flowing across my property in the 22 years I've been here. And now it seems every single time it rains.
Right.
And I'm listening to the runoff will be different in a couple of years. What does that mean? Does that mean that I for the next couple of years will continue to have streams, debris and puddles all over my property? I, I I don't know.
No, that's, that's not our intention here. Obviously, obviously we've jumped on this now and we're starting to push it pretty hard to find out what went wrong here. And again, in my estimation, the work that was done there does not match the originally approved subdivision design. And there needs to be some kind of a, of a correction here, whatever that correction is, because the original subdivision design was approved and was deemed to be sufficient. So, but we're so far away from that right now, we need to get back to it. And I think, and again, the, the only way to really the way to do that, of course, is as Dave suggested, and that is to come up with a, do an as-built plan so we can see what it is, do the calculations and for that, for that catchment area and and then correct what's wrong with the, with the existing situation. And I think that's a, I think a good start would be to get it back to the original subdivision approval situation. So
Okay. Because that was really my other question at the last meeting was the first thing you did was put that plan up and basically say, this was what was supposed to be built. That you get built and nowhere on that plan did I see that wall that is now on that.
Well, you know, I
Well, and I appreciate the fact that it's going to be addressed.
Yeah, well, when I, I didn't realize exactly how far, how far away until I started going out there myself and I've, since then I've spent some parts of my days every day working on this to find out what went wrong and trying to correct it. So once I realized what a problem it was, we've all, we've been working on it.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, and I want to, and I appreciate getting the pictures because it was, it was inferred to me that there was no, no runoff on this last storm on Saturday. And yet I got pictures so that I can say, oh, no, yes, there was. So, so no, it doesn't work. Period. So, so I thank you for that. Don't stop.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, anybody else have any comments on this?
Yeah, just one real quick.
Yep.
Hi, my name is John Doyle. You mentioned that somebody had mentioned the Quinlands earlier. We, we bought the property from the Quinlands last year at 20 Nutter Road. And it's still an issue on this property also.
Yeah, I don't, I don't doubt it, sir. I mean, from, because I've been out there and I was out there in the rain for a while with Dave, you know, we, we actually stood out in the rain, we were out there for an hour and a half or something, watching everything that happened out there while it was raining. So so I'm acutely aware of the fact that it doesn't operate properly. And that's why we're here now talking about it. And that's why we had Dave write up a report and we're gonna, we're gonna work our way forward with this.
I appreciate it. I just wanted to make, you know, make sure that you guys realize that the problem still is at this property also.
Well, that, that's good. That, that will, that will be also whoever, at some point there needs to be a, an engineer involved to take care of this and all this information is going to be transferred to them so that they know to look closely at those different things. So
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments right offhand here? Okay, nobody, somebody got your hand up? Do you have your hand up? No, I guess not. So I don't see anybody else. So, so basically I think what our plan is gonna, is here is to do is to begin, is to require some of these things to be done. There needs to be an engineer of record. We told the developer that we were going to be having this meeting tonight. We would hope that he would participate and tell us, apparently the original engineer. Are you there?
Yeah.
Are you here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, there you are. Are you, did you make, did you manage to come up with an engineer for this project?
I talked to Luke Roy today and he told me he was going to submit an as-built for lot six and show that the grading had been substantially completed according to the subdivision plan. I have not yet seen that yet. Can you hear me?
Okay, well, the, clearly, yes, yeah, I can hear you, but clearly in the, the grading at the base of, of, of of lot nine does not, or of nine, I guess that's nine Shea, doesn't really match the subdivision. So
The 96 elevation is exact to what he shot. They're both the same. They, they did bring the swirl up a little bit, but there was no existing grade on a topo down in the last contour at the corner of the stone wall. But about five feet before that was a 96 elevation. And he said that they completed the swirl to the same exact elevation as a subdivision plan. I have not seen the as-built. I just, that's what I'm told. I asked him to send it to me today. He told me he was going to bring it to the planning board before this meeting. I have not seen it yet.
Yeah, I don't believe we have it. So, so, but we still have the problem of water running off and even on Saturday, as these people took pictures and submitted to us pictures of Saturday, the water pouring off of the lot across their property.
Well, I went, I went there really today and he still doesn't have the gutters tied into the infiltration system. They're supposed to be tied in. So that's part of the problem.
Well, he's only collecting about a fourth of the house. I mean, what was, how much of the house was supposed to be collected to put into the infiltration units? All of it?
Well, at least 50% of it, the half back of the house should have been brought into infiltrators. That's what was supposed to happen. He hasn't done that yet.
Nope.
So he assured me that was going to be done. Wasn't done as, as I, as today. So I'm going to make sure it gets done. I'm holding them up on a closing, which I don't want to do, but I need to get these things addressed so it doesn't go to the new owner.
Yep. So I don't, the amount of water that I saw in the pictures coming off exceeds what I would anticipate coming off the roof of that house. So there's obviously more water getting down there than should. And again, that, that whole reassurance, as we, as we spoke about, you and I spoke about this, that, that it doesn't match. But that swell needs to go away and that grade needs to come across so that that level spreader can actually send any water that comes that way. I mean, I know that and it, it appears that the detention pond is working perfectly. It's exactly what it's supposed to be and it's not even contributing to this. I mean, it has the ability to contribute in a hundred degree storm or something, but we're not having that and it's not contributing water and yet you're still getting water across into the neighborhood. It's coming from somewhere.
I agree with you, Warren. I think what's happening is I think it's collecting the water on the right side of the house and on the rear side, I think that grade should be brought in. I think it's actually catching water. The stone's catching the water and it's pointing at that way. It needs to be
Letting it go across.
Exactly correct. And that's what I think we have to address that. I gotta talk to the builder there and tell him that needs to be done. I need to disconnect it from my, that wasn't supposed to be brought up and tied into the subdivision, into the subdivision detention pond either. So I want to connect, I want to disconnect that, that stone that goes in from the detention pond area to that. That lot rating that he did is for the lot only, has nothing to do with the pond. He should have never tied it into that pond.
That's right.
So I'm going to address that. I'm going to go myself. I have to myself. I'm going to go take that stone out of there and, and fill it in and put the grade across like it was designed to be. It was working great until he went in there and put that stone swell.
Right. Well, I'm not surprised because it looks to be like the original subdivision plan, which had that filled in, did not have that swell. Actually, if from, from the modeling that was done, it works. So the modeling is out the window now because of what's been done. So we need to go back to square one.
Exactly right. I just wanted to see the as-built plan to see how close it was. He told me he was coming today with a letter saying that it conforms to the subdivision.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about the elevation down at that corner is, I mean, because it is a 96 elevation, although there's a lot less 96 elevation on his, on his design than there was in the original. There's, there's a lot more quote unquote 96 elevation on the original design than there is right now. According to a septic design. So I think that it is shorted a little, but I don't think that's even the bigger issue. The bigger issue is too much water is getting to that point. And where it's coming from and where it should be going is the question.
I think, like I said, I think it's that stone along the back. It's almost like, how can I put this? If that was loom, I think it would dissipate into the ground. And I think what's happening is the stone is collecting the water.
And then speeding it up.
It's speeding it up. I think you did, you have to
Right now, you're, right now, your rate of runoff exceeds pre-development.
Right, because he put a stone swell. It's like putting a driveway down there. You know what I mean? It's like putting something furbius in the way and saying, okay, here you are, water. Let's go to the end.
So I really do think that, I really do think there needs to be some calculations done and some, some computations done to show that because I don't want to fix it once and then fix it again and then fix it again.
I hear you.
Okay, so what I want to do is get, get, get this, this properly. I mean, an as-built from him would be good, but I think there needs to be an as-built of a larger section because you still have the issue of the breakout on the house across the street. That's going to be tied into that storm drain there. Although again, it appears that the detention pond can handle that without a problem because the detention pond is, pond, from what I can see of it and look at the staining in it, has not contributed a single drop to this runoff.
Right.
So that means that it's, it's fine. The problem is coming from improper grading.
Correct. I agree.
Okay. All right. Is there any other, anybody else comments? Anybody have a question or a comment they'd like to make? Dave's, we, Dave and I have obviously spoken and, and he, I'm glad he agrees that he's willing to and he's willing to fix as much of this as we can. But we need to first get a handle on what's there and where we need to go with it. So that was Dave's, Gian Grande's recommendation and I, and I concur with that. I think that's where we need to go with it. So let's, we're going to continue to go forward with this. Stay in touch with everybody if, unless, if there are no other questions and everything, we're going to move on here.
Mr. Tassi has his hand up.
Oh, okay. Yes.
I just have one more question, sir. Is there any way possible that we, you know, along the way, along this process from this point forward, that we could get notified at some point, you know, like updated as to where we stand with everything that's going to be going on? Because I'm certainly not an engineer and I don't understand a lot of it, but I do understand some of it. So I didn't know if that was possible somehow.
What I would like to do, Mr. Tassi, is I would like to get, get everybody moved along in some direction so that we have an idea what we're going to do. Then I want them to bring it back to the board. I would like to notify you guys, especially you guys, you Butters, that, and so that you can come and listen to the final decisions out of the That, and so that you can come and listen to the final decisions out of the engineering as we move forward.
That would be great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. Well, I, I, it's, it's a little bit of, it's a self-serving too here because I want, I wanna know if it's working. I wanna hear from you to say, yeah, whatever they did work. That's what I wanna hear. So.
Me too.
So please do show.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, everybody for coming. Mr. Jean Grandi, whoop, I'm sorry, go ahead. Did I hear somebody else? No, I think it's just background noise. Okay. Mr. Jean Grandi, thank you very much for your time and coming tonight. Uh, Mr. Murray, thank you so very much. I'm glad you're willing to work with this. You know, if we all work together, we'll get this all squared away. There'll be no more issues. Okay, so do a, do a press up on your engineer and, and is, if Luke will be willing to be the site engineer as well. I know he's capable of it. If you uh, wanna have him um, take on some of this responsibility, it would help quite a bit too. Okay? Thank you. Okay, thank you, Dave, for coming.
All right. Thank you all.
Okay, all right. Bye-bye.
Hey, Warren, you did well.
Thank you.
It's uh.
I've got more than a little bit of time invested in this already.
Oh, I know you, what I mean, ti- time-wise tonight, it's only eight oh two, so.
Yeah.
You're right on, you're right on the button.
Well, I mean, it was, you know, I wanted to give everybody the chance, especially the people that are gonna be our eyes and ears out there as.
Oh, yeah.
I wanna hear from them.
The pictures and the videos are, are great, because you know, we, we can't be there when, I mean, we can sometimes, but not always. So we are available to go when it's raining like that.
Yep. Well, once I learned that there was an issue here, we, we jumped right into it with both feet on it. And the board has been on, we're, we're working on it. We haven't let up, we haven't backed off here, so.
You are.
We'll get it fixed. Do uh, Chris, do you wanna do a motion for the extension, the, uh, continuation?
Sure. Do you need to open that, do you need to open that hearing first? I mean, it's already open. It's a continued hearing.
Okay, I'll just, I don't know. I, we, you know, this is a continuation. I will open the public hearing, a continuation of the public hearing.
Mr. Pierce.
In Nine Flint Street. Yes, sir.
I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to grant the request continuance of the public hearing for thirty-nine Chestnut. And nine Flint Street until Tuesday, December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, at eight P M.
Second up.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got a roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Hayden.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Redlow. And uh, you, you are, I think you muted, Dave.
Aye.
Okay, and myself, aye as well. And Ryan's not with us this evening. So uh, thank you very much. Okay, um. Minutes. Well, Chris, while you got the uh, minutes, are you gonna be, motions in front of you?
I didn't see any, for, there are no minutes.
Oh, they're not there?
Here. No.
Okay. Okay.
You can do your A and R.
Yeah, we can do the A and R. Um. So do we have somebody uh, to present the A and R tonight, or?
Uh, yes, we do. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Good evening. My name is Peter Caruso. I'm an attorney. And tonight I represent the Heffron Asphalt Group. They have an application before you for a plan to believe to be a, an A and R plan and proven not required. I think you have copies of the plan there.
Yep.
If you, if you take a look at it, it's uh, it's gonna, the, some of the um. The proven not required will create two lots. Both lots will be not, will, will be conforming. Uh, they both have frontage in a public way. Lot two will have a driveway onto Winter Street, as shown. I've also, I've also submitted to the board. A copy of the driveway plan to show how the driveway is going to be implemented on lot two. And, and has um, it, it has a proper frontage on lot two. And also has, and we can talk about the driveway plan in a minute. Lot one, the, the main lot, has a frontage of three hundred and sixty-three feet. Lot two, a frontage of a hundred and seventy-two point six nine feet. Uh, lot one has an area of fifty-five thousand, three hundred and fifteen feet. And lot two has an area of forty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-one feet. Uh, both lots will conform to the zoning district highway business. Uh, the, the, on lot two, there will be a driveway and the plan that you have in front of you will show a driveway. Um, slope of three point one. Uh, we, we, that, that should be sufficient. And I'll take any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the board?
No, the drawing is uh.
Pretty, pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Chris.
Yep.
No, go ahead, David. I'm done. I'm done.
Uh, I, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I was just gonna ask, and it's, it's my, my own inexperience. But did, do we require anything more than the A and R for the curb cut onto Winter Street, onto Route sixty-two that's shown? That's handled in the A and R?
Um, go ahead, Danielle.
Uh, a curb cut permit would be needed from the D P W, but that curb cut by itself wouldn't um. Trigger a site plan review. I think, I mean, I appreciate that the curb, that the curb cut and driveway is shown. Because otherwise, there could be some question about the grade. Is this real frontage? Um, and it does show, it, it, it's a demonstration that it can be accessed. At least that was my interpretation of why it was there.
That's why they put it there. Yep, yep.
Um, but other than that, there wouldn't be another review, but the D P W would issue a, you know, a permit for the curb cut.
They would, they would review it for a sight line, things like that, or would sit it onto a highway? It's not onto just a residential road, right?
I don't know what's involved in issuance of, of the curb cut permit from D P W. I'm not actually sure what they, what they look like. Look, look, what they look at, uh, whether it's sight lines or grades. Um. I don't know.
Well, I would, yeah, I would think that if we had, if we were gonna do a development of some kind there. Um, which may, I don't know, maybe, maybe it will happen that they'll do some kind of development, which would result in a site plan review, and a review of the curb cut, but. Um. Um, we could check with the D P W on that to see if they would want anything further than. That, you know, because obviously the sight line there is good. It's a straight line on both sides, so.
Right.
It's not a, it's not a situation where there's a, where there's a questionable sight line.
If, if I may, Mr. Pierce. Um, David, the uh, A and R, one of the big things is, is having illusory frontage and access.
Right.
And, and having a big hill where you can't actually put a driveway in. Like, you know, having twenty feet from the roadway to the, to the ground. You can't really put a driveway in there. But there is a, uh, there is an elevation difference here, but this, this driveway is, kinda demonstrates that it can be done. They may not ever put the driveway there. They may put it there, but they don't have to put it there. It's, 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 it's basically a demonstration that they can actually build a driveway, which is good for us. We don't have to ask the question, is this?
Right.
Is this a real frontage or is this fake?
Yeah. Yeah, that needed to be dr- that needed to be there to make this A and R simple. They have that driveway already there, yeah. Yep.
And that, that's, that's why I didn't have many questions.
That's right. Yeah, and that is a point that they could, that, that just proving that they can, proving they can do access without a problem. Eliminates that as a question, but, but, but you are correct in that, um, they could move it around if they need to. For some reason or another, and when they get their permit from the D P W.
The other question I had, Mr. Chairman, is just, obviously, if you're doing an A and R and you're splitting a single lot into two lots, there could be things in the works. It's not really any of my business, but one thing I would like to understand, because the uses that are currently grandfathered there. Are not allowed in, you know, in the highway bus- business district without a special permit, without a site plan review. So, I just wanna understand from the attorney if there is gonna be some use that is planned. In here that does not match what was there before, because if it does, it will come back through us. And, or have to come back through us, because it's, it's not, no longer they're conforming.
Yeah, that's the comment that I made, Dave, that if anything, if they decide to do something different here, they will end up in front of us regardless.
Uh, that's a good question. I actually addressed that. Uh, the, the buyer is actually a tenant in the existing building. Uh, all he's going to do is own the building that is now leasing. So there were no plans to, to change that existing steel building uh, for the use that, that is currently used. Nothing's gonna change for the use. He's just going to own the building that is now rented.
Right. But I mean, again, without being a stickler, but that's, as an engineer, that's kinda my back. Is the use, or at least one of them there is a landscaper. The landscaping has never been a use there. Like, that wasn't a grandfathered Heffron use. It was materials. It was an asphalt company. You know, so it's landscaping now. And so what's, what's maybe the next one? I just wanna kinda get on record, what are the grandfathered uses there? It'd be important, I think, for the planning board to establish what that is. So that if Mr. Heffron does sell the properties, um, altogether. These, these new buyers, our owners have, are aware that there's limitations to this grandfathered use. And it's no problem. I mean, like Warren said, they'll just come back through us, but I just want them full disclosure to understand that.
I will. The attorney on the other side is, is very, very experienced, uh, and I will explain that to Attorney Peterson. Uh, but at this point, they just want to, you know, split the lots up and then go, go forward. But I understand where, where you're coming from, and if there is a change to use, I'm sure the Attorney Peterson will come before the board.
Yep. No problem. I have no problem, man.
Right. Thank you. Okay, um. If I could prevail upon you, Mr. Hayden, again?
Mr. Pierce, I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to endorse, as approval not required. The plan entitled Plan of Land, sixty-six Winter Street, North Reading, Mass. Dated September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one, drawn by Andover Consultants Incorporated.
Second up.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Um, any further questions or discussion? Okay, a roll call vote. Mr. Hayden, I'll say you.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Redlow?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So that, let the record show four in favor, no opposed, and Ryan is not with us this evening. And thank you, Mr. Caruso, for, for bringing everything to us tonight. Do you have a question there, Danielle? Are you good?
No, all set.
Okay, there you go. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch about getting the endorsed, uh, sorry, with the C P C members about getting the plans endorsed, and then with you, Mr. Caruso, about picking them up.
I gladly pick them up, Danielle. Thank you very much for your cooperation. We really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. All set?
Yep, all set.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, um. Well, we have a couple of items here. Small wireless facilities policy. I know we kinda went over that. Is there any changes? Bringing it back to the forefront for a little while.
Just bringing it back to the forefront. Um, I didn't make any changes from the last time we saw it. Um, the only thing that has, bless you, the only thing that has changed is that the Attorney General's Office has approved. Um, the zoning amendment that passed at town meeting in June. So at this point, we would be free to um, go ahead and uh, vote on a policy. I thought that, I wasn't necessarily, you know, I wasn't planning on having, doing that at this meeting, so I think we would advertise it first. But I just wanted to bring it back to you, share with you that, what the draft was, you know, dredge it up from six months ago. And remind you that we do have it out there. Um, and to see if you would like me to go ahead with scheduling. Um, just, we would just have it as a, as a public hearing at a regular meeting and it would be.
Sure. So there was some question about the burying of the cabinets?
Yes.
And um, what, what's the, you know, is there, is there an opposite, is there um. People that don't think we should do that, or is there?
Town Council's response to that was, you can put it in the bylaw that you want the cabinets underground, but. You can't require it in an instance where they can't do it. So if they wanted to do an installation, you can't use that as a, a reason to deny it.
Water table is like, if it's six inches down, with the thing gonna be underwater all the time, you, they're not gonna do that.
Right. So we have to let them, we need to allow for the other kind of design also, um, if they can do that. But I could adjust the bylaws so that, or adjust the policy so that it, it, it says that more clearly.
Yeah.
Mr. Pierce.
Yep.
So Danielle, um, can we require? That if they cannot bury the cabinets, they give us reason and engineering proof they can't? You follow what I'm saying? They, they can't just come up and say no, just because they want to.
I think we should put something in that does require it. Um, I can also run that by town council, but I think that's reasonable. I think we should.
Yeah, not that, you know, a- all I wanna see is the engineering proof they can't do it.
Yeah.
Because we know that that's how they do it in other parts of the country. They bury these things. It's a little different here. Right, you do, Warren. And, but where's their water table? It's not.
Yeah, way down, yeah.
It's not like our water table. So when that's, i- if they can show us that the water table is, like you said, a foot down or six inches down. It's, it's not really feasible for them to bury it. Now we have to do something different.
There are places in this country where, where um, the flat, where there are a lot of flatlands, you know, out in, in the, you know, Kansas, Indiana, Missouri. And where the land's pretty flat. And so when it rains hard, every place gets wet. I mean, it's not.
Right.
Well, you see it on the news, the flooding that happens in a lot of these, these states where the land is very flat. With, in New England, we don't, we have so many hills and everything, everything goes to the low spot, so.
Yeah.
We're not as universally affected by flooding rain as an area that's flat, where everybody will get affected by it.
That's right.
So that means that, that, so what that means is that, that these cabinet situations, if things have been on, have probably been worked out. So where they can be put in areas that may have occasional impact. That, I think that was my point.
Right, right, right. Okay.
Okay.
You want me to set? A, a, a date for us to have? We could even put it on as, you know, workshop discussion and, you know, vote. Um, on a policy and we can advertise it. Um, I don't know if you want me to do that yet.
What I, what I would probably like is, you know, one thing that what I would like, uh, I'm not addressing your question right there. I'm, I'm going back to the burial. I'd like to, to see if, if any other towns or any other uh, municipalities have, have insisted on underground. You know, because I know in our planning magazines, there are a lot of advertisements, you know, of underground cabineting for different kinds of things. So um, you know, you, just every one of them's gotta add two or three ads of something showing specialized cabinets to go underground. You know, to, for, for, to hold utilities. So uh, so I know that there, there's, there's been some research, certainly some innovation available for that kind of a thing. But yeah, probably um. If we're gonna set a policy, we probably would wanna, I don't know if we wanna have a meeting and then brainstorm all our policies. You know, put everything, you know, everybody think of as much as they can and, and let's look at, again, at other bylaws and, and, and put together a policy that we think addresses that.
Well, we do have it drafted.
Yeah, okay.
Um, which we can discuss, we can change. Um, it's been a long time since we talked about it, but we do have a draft policy, so.
Okay, so let's put it on another meeting and we'll, and we'll, you know, where we don't have too much else, and we'll, we'll review it. In the meantime, everybody can, um, if you have, you, you, since you sent it out, we can all just read, because it's quite a few pages to read. So, so we can read the whole thing through again and, and come up with any comments or questions.
Okay, so I'll put it on the agenda for a less busy meeting for a review. And then follow that meeting. When we're satisfied, we'll schedule a date for the actual public hearing and to pass it.
Okay, yep. Okay.
Everybody's favorite thing.
I'm just the one for the ride.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, you know. Um, I, you had a meeting with the building inspector, right, on this? And I don't think I was available for that meeting, so. Go ahead.
Um, so I had, I brought it to the last development team meeting, as suggested the last time we spoke about this. And each um, person who attended the meeting had, had some feedback, um, some comments. I had some sort of specific questions on a few issues that I would like them to focus on. Um, but I did, I think I got some decent feedback. I, I wrote it up and I included it in the share file. Um, uh, the assessor wasn't able to attend, but she sent me her feedback separately, which, um, you know, I thought she had made some good points. Raised some questions and concerns. Um, I just kinda, I mean, I can go over the various comments that they made. But I think in general, um, there was generally, um, not a lot of support for detached. Which on this board, also not a lot of support for detached, um, accessory dwellings. But within a house, um, there, there really wasn't anyone at the development team meeting who had any objection to us having a process to allow those. But police and fire, their bottom line is they just wanna know where these are, so that they know where people live, so that in an emergency, they can find them. That's really their main concern. Um, there were some, there were some other pieces of feedback, but that was really their, their biggest, um, issue. And so, having a good way to track. Having a good way to track these, everyone really seemed to agree that a special permit process would be preferable so that each one of these really could be reviewed individually. Size was talked about. The assessor thought that it should be of a larger size and the the others didn't quite agree and thought that they should really be limited to it to a bit smaller. More than, you know, maximum nine hundred square foot range. And.
Why wouldn't the assessor think they should be?
She had said, let me just pull up her notes.
Pretty high.
Bigger. Bigger than my house, let me.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's about the sixty-five percent add to my house, what she's what thinks is okay. It'd be a lot.
I think she was concerned that if we made the size limit too small, that it wouldn't be of help to anyone. But let me see exactly what her range was. I'm just gonna pull that up in the. Okay. It's in my memo.
I can read it if you want.
It's at the very end.
I don't think I ever thought of it from that point of view, that if it was too small, that wouldn't be. You know.
Helpful.
Attractive.
Yeah.
So she she notes that there's one for on Stone Cleave that has one thousand three hundred seventy-four square feet. That is in fact bigger than my house. And another one at sixty-six Chestnut. Six-six Chestnut, that's interesting, over fifteen hundred square feet. Everyone.
Those are huge.
Everyone else.
Over five thousand altogether, I think.
Those are, some people suggested making it a percentage of the primary house, limiting it to, you know, X percent or. X number of square feet, whichever is larger, to make it proportional. I don't know how important the proportion is. I think it's more, we probably just don't want them too huge.
Yeah. Well, you could, you know, you can use up nine hundred square feet pretty quick. How big's your kitchen, Danielle? Is it ten? Your kitchen's like twelve by twelve, twelve by fifteen?
Well, it's combined with my dining room, so it's bigger than that, but I don't have a dining.
You have an eating kitchen is what you have.
I have it. I have an eat-in kitchen, yes, yes, I do.
So I mean, if it if it's twenty by fifteen, you're talking, you know. That's three hundred square feet right there. That's a third of nine hundred square feet.
Yeah.
So, and I so.
Trying to create, Chris, are you trying to create another house? Or are you trying?
No, 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 even in a part, in an apartment, in apartment. So.
But is that, I think the whole limiting thing in the comments from the people in this committee, that our committee in that in the development group are. You know, and then even the suggestions from the state are, if we're trying to limit it to one or two people, then getting up into fifteen hundred square feet. Is quite more than enough to put in three bedrooms. I mean, it just seems like.
Yeah, no, I wasn't saying.
In a community with septic, that seems like a very known, you know, a bad thing to do, you know, like.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
More bedrooms. So. I I just.
Limiting, limiting the size, limiting the size of it might, might, might contribute to the ability of more people to take advantage of it because of the septic system thing. Go ahead, Jeremiah.
Well, that's why I think that we go back to that point of like who, like the limitations on residency on these kind of things. Because that's gonna define what kind of spaces are necessary. I mean, from that point forward, if you're saying that it's only gonna be, you know, familial members of the the owner. Or if you even expand it out to something like an au pair or nanny suite kind of limitations. You're, you know, you can say that a certain tight little footprint's gonna be appropriate. But I don't think that, you know, it's beneficial to define that without defining the other question first.
Well, I was, I was trying to thinking about it from like what Dave said, that that, you know, if we have a home, a good, a good sized home and it's. A four-bedroom home and you're gonna give up some portion of it to for a. For a ADU, does that, does one of the bit, are you gonna take up the space of one of the bedrooms? So that it's still four bedrooms, it's just that it's three bedroom and a one bedroom as opposed to one four bedroom. You know, because if you go to five bedrooms, that would, that would require an upgrading of the septic system.
That was Bob Racy's main piece of feedback, which is, these all have to be reviewed by by the health department. Because we're assuming that we will need septic upgrades. These are obviously adding bedrooms. So every one of them has to. And actually, his suggestion was that we put it. We put the requirements for what needs to be submitted for the septic plans like right there in the bylaw and on the application. So at the time that someone is applying for this, they know right away that that a septic review and upgrade will be will be needed for the adding of of bedrooms.
That that's gotta create some issues too for for a lot of them because in because, you know, when you. If you increase the number of bedrooms, anything that you do has to go full compliance. Now there is no variance, nothing.
No variance.
Unless, unless we write something in that allows a variance, you know, but 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 from a code point of view. If you increase the number of bedrooms, the new system has to be full compliance, which means there has to be enough room for the new system and the reserve area of the same size. So we're talking about a substantial amount of real estate will get used up. And it has to be available in order for that to happen. Yes, Jeremiah, please.
Well, so that goes to the other question of the detached or non-detached. I mean, when you're making the, if if you eliminate detached, you really put a premium on how those little footprints can work when it comes to the septic. You got a big enough property and you can have a septic system that's supported detached. Forcing it to be attached creates potentially unnecessary complications in there. And if we wanted to make it workable, it it seems an unnecessary kind of restriction. The other thing that stands out on that point to me is that from aesthetics. I mean, I think that if we look around town, there's enough ranch houses that have an attached. And not enough other kind of houses that have interesting standalone kind of art, you know, architectural features. And there are some around town that do, that are value adding, in my opinion. So to me, it's it's one of those limitations that both is aesthetic aesthetically limiting and and creates complications when it comes to all that stuff.
So you're saying that a detached unit would be better because the detached unit could have its own septic system?
I'm saying that it is like, why create limitations that could preclude?
Just so you'll understand the the code.
Speaking from ignorance, but I mean.
Yeah, if you have a, if you have a garage and you put a an ADU above the garage and you say, well, I don't wanna increase my other septic, so I'm gonna put one in just for this one bedroom thing. The minimum design allowed by the code is three bedrooms. So you still end up with a fairly sizable system for that one bedroom. So, so, so again. When you, when you, and you know, it has to have its own full-size, you know, code septic tank, fifteen hundred gallons, three-bedroom design. So you you you, and again, it's it'd be new construction, so it has to meet the code completely, including a reserve area. So you're not really avoiding much by doing that. And some of the newer systems may be expandable, so. As long as the reserve areas are expandable. So there's a couple of ways that you could get around it, but but just so you'll understand how that works. The problem with this, with this, with with the ADUs is gonna be. Is as Bob Racy pointed out, it's gonna be the septic systems, you know, you know, keeping, keeping everything in code. You know, whereas, and that's the, that's why this kind of a bylaw worked really well in Reading where they got mostly sewer because they doesn't really matter. Whereas in Reading, now we have limitations that they never even thought of. And so one of the reasons for not going with detached is the fact that, you know, I mean. You know, the only other way you could do would be to tie the detached unit into the existing unit. And I don't eliminate a bedroom in the house? I don't know. If you have a four-bedroom home, you eliminate one of the bedrooms, however that could be done, so that you could put it in the garage or something, you know, I don't, I don't. Again, that that may be doable. I mean, if you have a couple who who had a family and the family's gone and they wanna do an ADU now. And there's only two of them living in the house, they have four bedrooms, they'll give up one easily.
Oh, yeah.
So so that, but how that got, how that, how that gets done and and certified would be the question.
Because if they sell the house, then they got, you know, if you can't make, get a get rid of that bedroom.
Yeah.
You know, because the next people coming in may need the four-bedroom for the people that own the main house and still wanna have their rental unit there.
So maybe you combine two of the bedrooms into one master or something.
That's a sweet, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you can put it, you can put as many bathrooms as you want and it's only bedrooms that count.
Exactly true. You're exactly.
It's only bedrooms that count, because that says how many people can live there.
That's right. So, so, yeah, so that you're exactly right. So, so, I mean, I'm just, these are just suggestions on ways to work around that that issue.
Yeah.
So. Just thinking out loud some here, so.
And and I kinda, I kinda like Danielle's idea going across the assessors, making it a bigger unit is is. Make it a min size for, you know, a small house, nine hundred square feet. But you could do some percentage with a bigger house, which may be on a bigger piece of property, you know, it's got. All of those things could be going on for it. And, you know. It could be a little bit bigger unit. It doesn't mean it has to be more bedrooms. Just needs to be, it's a.
Keep in mind, you gotta subtract this out of the existing square footage, unless you're gonna be adding on to the.
Well, if you put it in the basement, then you got, you know. On these big houses, how big a house, how big a basement do they have? Some of these people got two thousand square feet in their basement.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of these bylaws allow for, you know, three types. One is the detached, one is put it completely within the house, and one is do an addition on your house, and that's your in-law unit. So I think that is another option. There can be an addition. Um, if they choose to.
Yeah, if they did it as an addition, then perhaps you could, if they did it as an addition, then perhaps you could eliminate a bedroom in the house and and on that side. Or 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 cap or block that bedroom.
Capture.
Captured on the addition.
Right.
So that you don't see it. If you did that, I think you would, you'd be able to get by the board of health thing.
Right.
So, you know, and and by the way, Chris, one of the things I've run into over the years is when you count bedrooms, the assessor does not count bedrooms that are in the basement.
I know they don't.
Basement bedrooms are not counted. That always slayed me is why that was true. But every town I've ever been in where we, where we go to do a septic system and we say, they say, how many? We say it's got four bedrooms. And they said, well, how many are, there's three upstairs and one in the basement. They said, we don't count the one in the basement, so it's three bedrooms. But there's really four. Well, we don't count one in the basement, so.
That's interesting, because if you go to a big city like. I don't know. You go to a city like Revere and you put an apartment in the basement, all they care about is having two modes of egress from the bedroom.
Yeah.
Because I did that in my house in Revere. I had to have, I had had an egress window.
Yeah.
And and of course, I had to have all kind of special stuff because you don't wanna have a egress window in Revere on the on the basement.
Yeah, yeah, because they would come in.
Yeah, right. See, I had to put a lock.
They can't come in, yeah.
Right. I had to put a lockable grate on it that they could open from inside.
Inside, right.
I lived in that apartment for over a year, so it was, it was legal that way. I wanted to be able to get out.
So so anyway, there's a few ideas on how to, how we can do that and keep and keep them in, keep it in the main house. So by expanding, like Danielle, that was good you brought that up because expanding the existing and maybe using one of the bedrooms off the existing and. To to actually do that, do that without having to deal with the health issue, so.
So I share, I hear Jeremiah's point about kind of the aesthetics of a detached structure, you know, which. You know, a carriage house, things like that, that can look aesthetically nice. My my issue is, and we talked about it before, is. An addition, which I, again, I I agree with Danielle and I, that's my reading of both the Massachusetts one as well as some of the comments here is. An addition is fine, you know, would be part of the attached, if you will, to the main structure, but. It's it's getting where you're, the accessory unit, dwelling unit or accessory structure is. Following the requirements of a shed, you know, and being allowed to be five feet from somebody's property. Like, that's where. That's where I have a real problem with these detached structures because I just. See them getting much too close to residents. And again, we have to always remember. We're trying to provide housing in a means or a way to do that for people, but we're also trying to protect the person right next door that maybe doesn't wanna build an ADU. Or doesn't want one next to them. So it's, you gotta balance it. You're not gonna see out of fifty-five hundred homes here roughly, you're not gonna see fifty-five hundred people put ADUs in. You know, in years one through five. So there's gonna be a number of people that don't want these. And so we have to protect those people as much as we have to provide a means for. The seniors and whoever, you know, to add add these kind of apartments on. It's 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 a balance. But I think I read all, I read the meeting, you know, the all the, it's to me. From all the different department heads, it captured almost every single one of my comments and, you know, concerns. They all have the exact same one, so I felt somewhat vindicated reading all that. And then. The only one that I disagreed with was just Debbie's with the size. I just thought that was a little large. But that said, I agree with what you said, Warren, if it's a, or Chris, actually, sorry, if it's a large enough. Property and large enough home, then it does make sense that, you know, maybe back to what Danielle said, the percentage thing would would overrule that.
Yeah, come into play, yeah.
So I'd be, I'd be open to that because I do get that. If it's a really big property, really big. You know, home or whatever, that you would wanna just be limited to nine hundred. But that's, that's kind of my two cents, but that was, it seemed like a constructive meeting, though. There was a lot of good. Feedback from everybody.
Okay. So, but I mean, again, that that I I think that probably eliminating. Detached structures from our power bylaw probably is, at this particular point in time, makes a certain amount of sense. From a number of different avenues.
Yeah. But you know, I do agree that putting that septic right up the front, Danielle came, I think, said that, right up the front of this. Right where they have to, or maybe it wasn't her, maybe it was somebody else.
It's Bob Racy.
Bob Racy's idea, put it right up front in there so that they they see it. Right away. And they say, oh, I, there's no way I can do this because I'm already having trouble with the septic I have. And now I gotta, I gotta do new. So there's no way I can do it. So they'll just drop that idea. Oh, and it's not like we're forcing them. We wanna, we wanna get them the information. So it's right in their face and and it can't be missed. And I I do agree with that. You you can't let these people miss that. And you know, if it's, if it's line one, it's just like ingredients on a on a box. The first ingredient is the most. The last ingredient is the least.
That keeps kind of coming up. I know it's like. A dog chasing its tail, but it's a kind of a contradiction here because it seems like as Debbie just riddles off these two locations and they're very new homes. That have apparently, you know, built fifteen hundred square foot ADUs, like there's, we don't have, they're not allowed, so yet they're building them. Even references the permit. So why are we even coming up with a bylaw if Jerry can't stop them? And like, what is our bylaw even gonna stop them? Are people just gonna, so, yeah, that's cool.
Well, I think, I think the idea, I understand what you're saying, Dave, but I think that the bylaw is an attempt to encourage this to happen more often. And give them some direction because there's a lot of people that may wanna do it, but have no clue what the what the rules are or or.
But Danielle, does it have any, will it have any teeth? Like, will this stop the what is going on now? You know, that that's the part I just, I'm like.
Well, I I think what it does is it gives us some parameters that we can, some rules and regulations, some parameters that we can hold people.
For the roof followers, but anybody.
But the building inspector has, but if they violate the rules and the regulations that we put forth, building inspector has the ability to do something about it. Right now, he has nothing.
Warren, I guess, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but what we've seen is like. You know, our lying eyes are telling us a different story. It it's not what's happening.
But he has no law. He has nothing to compare it to. He has no.
Yeah, he doesn't have anything. If if we put it in the bylaw.
I mean, what he has is that it's not allowed. That's all he has.
Hey, Warren, hang on a minute.
I disagree. If Jerry was here to tell you different, it's, he has attorneys from these owners and they tell you, sorry, there's nothing you can do. And that doesn't have anything to do with if we have a zoning bylaw or not. It's a state thing. It's a building code thing. And they just tell Jerry too bad. And Jerry, you know, tries a few of his things, but it's not like he's gonna be able to shove this. Bylaw in front of people that, again, the non-rule followers, they're gonna go continue to do whatever they want. Apparently, because that's what's been happening. Because right now, we don't allow ADUs either.
No, but I, there are two kinds of things that we have in town. One, we have a few legal ones that were already done legally. Two, we have ones that are actually illegal that we don't know about. And three, we have ones. That act like ADUs but are not true ADUs because they don't have all of the elements that make it a true separate unit. Like, they share a common entrance or you can travel within the house from one to the. Or you can travel within the house from one to the other. Or they have, I mean, they, just having two kitchens doesn't make it an ADU and it never.
What are the two ones that, uh, that Deb references though? She even says they're.
I don't know. So I have to ask Deb about that or maybe Jerry, because I don't, I mean, I don't know where any of them are.
They may be almost there. Most there and, and not, and not cross the line.
Right. You could have two kitchens, you could have this, that and the other thing.
And you'll always be able to.
I can only go with Deb says. It says true in-law apartment with thirteen hundred seventy-four square feet. On one stone cleave. And again, one stone cleave is a new road really, and it's a fairly. You know.
Yeah, they just put that addition on too.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, like, I get, I get what you're saying, but I'm just asking. A question that when Jerry would met in front of us, it doesn't seem like even with the bylaw, he can stop the people. Like at Stone Cleve at, at Chestnut from just doing whatever they want.
Okay, but we don't know really truly what the situation is with Stone Cleve. It may be that they share a common entrance. And if that's the case, it's not an ADU and they wouldn't need a special permit. Um, but. But Jerry, what Jerry's dealing with is having two separate kitchens and two separate everything and, and in. There are configurations like that that he truly can't stop because of the building code. It doesn't make them a true ADU. This bylaw is for true ADUs. And you're right, we're never gonna find everyone who's, um, not going along with the law. But I mean, that wouldn't, but now there's no legal way to do a true ADU. And we want. To allow for an avenue for that, I think. And I think what we should do.
For it. I just, I just wonder if you're gonna have some people that conform and then some that don't, you know.
All we can do is get the best bylaw that we can put together and hope that enough people adhere to it that we, that we, A. Get a reasonable construction of ADUs and B, that we know where they are, so that we can tell the fire department where they are. And, and, and we just get the best cooperation we can. And the ones that are partially ADUs. If they can, if they pick up the ball and say, okay, we'll finish it and, and follow the rule now. I mean, it will give them a roadmap that they don't have now. So let's just work on the best thing we can put together. Cause you're right, some of it is, you know. Some of it is, is, is trying, I don't want to use some of the metaphors that come to mind, but, uh. Doing the best you can to do to take against a, a tide of things coming in here. So. So let's, let's just do the best we can with this, with this bylaw and see however many people we can get to conform to it. Uh, I mean, I, I think that's all we can do.
Something is better than nothing.
Yeah, we'll take as much input, we'll put as much into it as we feel we can without making it too restrictive, you know?
No, we do get calls about, you know, ever so often, you know, I've got elderly parents or I have an elderly relative. I really like to, you know, build them a separate apartment in the house. Is there any way I can do that? And it would be nice to be able to give people a means. To do it legally.
Yeah, you see, yeah, you need to have this, you need to have this, you need to have this. And most of all, you need to have a septic system that can handle it all. You know?
That's gonna, it's probably all gonna come down to.
Yeah, well, it, it will, it will. Either that or they're gonna have to make their homes smaller so it conforms, you know?
Or they're gonna have to expand their septic system. I, I don't know.
I'm sorry, sorry, uh, Jeremiah, go ahead.
No, I was just saying that I would prefer that we, you know, draft something that is. Open-ended rather than unnecessarily restrictive for people who have the capability of doing it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Attached. I don't think that my property even qualifies. You know, to be, it's that hypothetical, but if I was sitting on a nice piece of land. If I went again, I always go back to that idea. If I'm, if I'm moving to a community and I'm gonna put down millions of dollars on the property. And it's a big enough piece of property and a nice, you know, uh, situation that if I've got the capability. I shouldn't be restricted as long as I follow those kind of rules of the septic and all those kind of things, the neighbors and boundaries, all those things. So to just, to conclude it from the offset.
Feet though, for an accessory unit is the issue though, for those detached. Cause that's what's going in. People are converting garages that are five feet from somebody's property into a dwelling. Or they're putting in brand new, five, ten feet from somebody's lot line. And again, so that's where. As I said before, that's where my issue with, is with detached. If you could have the same kind of setback rules. And get the structure away from another person's property, who again, might not be as enthusiastic as you. You know, for, for having something right next to them. Um, you know, that's who I'm trying to protect, that other person, not the one that.
Right, right.
You could build that right into the bylaw. You could make them be a certain required setback from.
But I do think we should walk before we run and we don't know what we're gonna unleash. And again, we, we do have the reality in this town and we could. Along twenty-eight in the future, expand to, cause you then have sep, uh, sewer, it might change things, but. Right now, we are limited in this town versus others that we do have septic. And we have to understand the reality of that. So we shouldn't be trying to build fifteen hundred square foot apartments on. Um, you know, on small lots, whatever.
Right, right. No, I, and I agree with you, Dave. Absolutely.
Yeah. So, uh, again, we, we should eliminate the, so we should, we should call this down to basically in-house enhancements and maybe additions. To an existing structure, but no detached. And then, um, and, and Jeremiah, I agree, we should, you know, you know, we might as well make it a little bit open-ended because. They're gonna do it anyway. So let's make as much of it legal as we can and then get some control over it. Right? That's, that's, uh, I think that's the way. So, so does that mean we're ready to start moving forward on drafting something and, and, uh? Or what do we want to, uh?
You want me to just write a draft and then we can schedule a workshop discussion at an upcoming meeting? Maybe not a meeting where we have a ton of hearings, um, we can.
Yeah, we could do a five week, you know, remember we've always, we used to have the five week. That fifth Tuesday, we would do a workshop in it. We got a lot of stuff done. We would designate that day, no.
No hearings.
No hearings, no signing of anything, just talking about the workshop.
Yeah, and then we'll put it, we'll get all this down. We'll, we'll take the basic draft that you do and we'll get as much, we'll make all the changes, our additions we need to. And try to get a second draft that, that, you know, has most of our concerns in it.
And then we, then we could start bringing the second and the third draft to a public.
We'll include the board of health's concerns right, right up front in it. You know, that way, uh, we'll, we'll see how that resonates.
Okay. Do you, I mean, our next opportunity for a fifth Tuesday, I think is, is this month. And I think it's two weeks from tonight. That might be a little soon, um.
Yeah, that would be tough on you.
So, I, I mean.
January must be the next one, right?
I, I haven't.
Let's see.
Yeah, definitely not December. That would be.
Uh, see, four, five, uh. Yeah, this, January has a, is a fifth week, but it's not a fifth Tuesday. So we'd have a meeting on the fourth and the eighteenth, and then we could do a, you know, maybe a workshop on the twenty-fifth. But that would, you know, that would be, that would be one week right. You, wherever you do it, the workshop is gonna be either right after a real meeting. Or just before a real meeting.
True. We could also, December seventh, actually, no, we do have a here, a new hearing on December seventh, um. We could, we could just schedule it for a, a, a meeting that's not too busy. We could do that.
Could, could.
Okay. All right. Well, then that's, uh, would be our plan. In the meantime, let's just all think about it. And if you think, if you get a chance and you come up with some things you're thinking about, write them down, send them off to Danielle, so she can include them in your, in her, uh. In their first draft. And then we can either like. I would, don't be afraid to add stuff though, you know, to, 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 to think of something and just throw it out there because. You know, everybody has a different take on it. And, uh, the more we put in there, the more we'll consider, you know, the, the more input we have. The better of a law we'll come up with, so. So let's look at it as much as, as, uh, much as we can, so. Alrighty, um.
I think you've done it. I think you've done it again, Warren.
Well, no, we didn't do plenty of administrative updates.
I, I promise. It's only three.
Okay.
It's, it's always answering the questions that takes the long time.
Um, okay, yes, exactly. It's the answering of the questions. Okay, the first thing is super brief. Um, one fifty-three Marblehead Street is not for sale. Um, it's a neighbor's house that, that is on for sale. And you mentioned it at the last meeting, so I just wanted to follow up.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, the Willis Woods Forum, something went out on town news about this. I've been, uh, part of this group. It's mainly Lynn Fields project, but it affects all these surrounding communities. I think I mentioned it the last time. Um, it's, what's interesting about this is really pretty much would be a new large conservation land area. Um, for, 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 for this area and, um. The connection to it could potentially be rail trail if it comes to pass. Even if it doesn't, um, another thing that's interesting about this area is it's adjacent to, um, the, the Old Smith properties. So could potentially open up a means of having some type of walking, hiking. Access to that, to that area, um, that doesn't exist now. So anyway, there's a public forum on Thursday. Residents of all the towns involved are invited. Um, I think about fifty-four people have registered so far. I'll be, um, there with Phil Hertz. So Phil is more involved, obviously with the rail trail. Because the LUC is doing that project and, and we're not. So he's gonna do all the talking involving the rail trail. Um, and I'll be there really just talking about, um, you know, the importance of having a, a, a nice, large piece of conservation land. Uh, nearby to North Reading, accessible to North Reading and potentially even connected to it, if, you know, certain. If certain things happen in the future. Um, so anyway, just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um. And finally, um, so Abacus, so David Eisen and I have been in touch since he last attended our, our meeting. Putting the finishing touches on his presentation, one sticking point came up, which is, we don't know what to call it in terms of. Um, it can't be called the town center, cause we have the town center. So he was asking me how should it be referred to? And I said, I would ask you. I initially felt. It should just be referred to as, you know, Main Street slash Winter Street, but he said, that's not quite what it is. And, you know, should it be the new downtown? Should it be, what should it be? And I, I just wasn't sure what to tell him. And so I wanted to bring that up. And then I.
New downtown sounds nice. Not town center, because there is the historic town center and. You don't wanna light that fire under some people.
Hmm.
There are, there's already a fire lit under them for a house right now. So.
Okay. So that was actually David's suggestion. Um, I don't know what everyone thinks about that. If there was anything else you wanted me to tell them.
What was, what was the last one?
Uh, new downtown.
Business district.
Business district.
Or community district or. New downtown. I mean, that, that just seems, um.
Yeah.
Needy.
Yeah, you're right.
Seems what?
Needy.
Needy?
Yeah. If you call it so why, South though, Winter Street.
There you go. You're from New York, are you?
That's great. That's great.
Even things like crossroads, you know? You know, the intersection of the town and the different parts of the community.
Or, well, you could say downtown crossing, but there's one of those things, but that's in Boston, right? There's a crossroads everywhere, so.
Chris, what's the name? The, the, you know how we had the, and I don't know why, Chris, I'm asking in particular, I suppose I could ask Warren too, but you know, in our main street districts, they all have a name. What's the name of the one that includes that?
Oh, it's in our zoning overlay map. That.
It's in the site plan review overlay.
Yeah, it's, yeah, site plan review for, for trying to make things look in four different styles down Main Street.
Let's see if I can find it, cause whatever that one's called.
That would work.
Probably would. Let me see, um.
That was a good idea.
Thank you. Now I have to find it, um.
Well, and that's what we use to, to help design, uh, heavenly donuts.
Yes.
Exactly what, I, I brought that up, pointed it to the designer before they put pen to paper.
Where is it? It's really hard to find in the zoning, so I'm trying to.
Is it in the? Is it in the, uh?
Yeah, it's an almost, it's three, four overlays that we had, um.
Yeah, you, you, you worked on those, Warren. I never did. We had a, you had a consultant come in and there was one, um.
Not especially happy with the whole thing.
But the names were good. The names were all quite good.
They were good names.
I just look in the.
It was Lowell Crossing or something Lowell.
It was Lowell Crossing. You're right. It doesn't quite work for this, does it?
No.
Tough one.
Yeah.
That's why I said Main Street slash Winter Street, because it doesn't sound like we came up with anything catchy. It just describes the area.
Yeah. It's kind of like, uh.
It's a good point though, because I mean, it, that is the kind of name that really needs to invoke imagination of the people. And it needs to be brandable.
Yeah.
Brandable, yeah.
Yeah. And, and Mr. Wallner did not come up with anything.
I feel like I've heard him say new downtown. And maybe that's where David had heard it. I don't know. I don't quite remember the origin of that name, but.
I, I still can't believe that in Salem, the whole Tuscan village thing is like, really, guys? Salem, New Andrews, Tuscan, like, what, what, what are we talking about?
Yeah.
That's the thing, but when I say needy, it's like, we don't, you don't wanna, so, you're like trying to like associate with something that you're not. Like it needs to be genuine. It needs to be, you know, built into some kind of, you know, foundation of reality.
It's like shopping at the crossings or something like that. I don't know.
Yeah.
Cause there's gonna, there's gonna be shopping there. There's not a lot, but there's gonna be some shopping there or eating or. Or meeting.
Like coming up with a name for a development, which I think we're not doing that exactly yet.
Yeah.
Trying to describe the area, like the, what is that?
It's what we wanna make it into, that, 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 that. In other words, a subdivision wants to be made into. A bunch of housing and everything. So that's, that's, so, so the name reflects that, you know? So, um, what, what we're trying to, so trying to name it. Um, you have two choices, either name it what it would be, which is that, you know, uh, you know, um. A, um, um. A retail, uh, or the residential and retail, you know, area. Or you gotta name it after some prominent fixture there that, 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 uh, like we had the, the drive-in theater, what was the name of the drive-in? And, um, cause that, that had a, that was there for many, many years, the drive-in theater.
Yeah, well, was it worse? There you go.
Starlight, and that still was used. Oh, but the car wash is gone, but it.
But if you take a look, uh, listen, take a look at those plans for, for that, for the A and R we did tonight. What's that whole property just to the west of it called? Starlight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's still called that.
Yeah, take a look at those plans. You'll see.
The, the mobile home, you mean?
That, on the plan that they, that they gave us for, for, they A and R for sixty-six Winter Street.
Yeah.
Take a look at it. Look at what they call the associated property there.
Right.
Starlight, Lily Starlight. Owner.
Do you think if we use that in the presentation, people will, will understand it or recognize it?
I think we would have to, we'd have to start and, 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 and with that, with that name and begin and develop that name. I don't think we can just suddenly throw it on.
Yeah. But.
I noticed the, uh, Heavenly Donuts property is owned still by Heffron, at least on that.
Yeah.
Only that corner, he's, he's given that corner to them, allows them to use it, right?
No, I mean, he means sixty-eight Winter Street, right? Where heavenly donuts is.
No, if you look, if you look at the, the 66, we were just broken up, there's a corner that he leases to them.
Hmm.
No, but heavenly donuts itself is still owned by them, right? Cause that, I mean, at least that's what the assessor maps show.
Still owned by Heffernan? He owns the property?
That's how it's listed.
Maybe he does.
All right. I'm not totally sure what to tell David how to refer to this in the presentation. Should we do something extremely generic, like Main Street or something? And, and let him know that we're thinking of using this name?
Well, or give it to him and see if he comes up with something with it.
Well, you, you may, you may have to key, again, yeah, I may have to date, name it after. And so the Main Street, when is that concept? The Main Street, Winter Street concepts, you know, it's something like that. Cause it's a, that's what it is, the concept. So we call it the Main Street, Winter Street concept. And this is what we're trying, we're thinking about doing here.
You could do that, but he, he, Danielle could throw that name out, starlight to him and see if he comes up with something spiffy, Warren.
Yeah. But I still think that if you want to be descriptive, that's what it is, the Main Street, Winter Street.
Main Street concept, yeah. Cause it's.
That's what I'll tell him.
Yeah. And that's, that's a good, that's a good description of what it is without, you know, without leaning on somebody else's perception of what town center is or anything like that.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe my final thought.
Yeah.
Um, I would imagine any use of this would try to tie in the Martin Brook and the, the natural resources in those areas. Why not use Martin Brook as some kind of, uh, naming mechanism?
Because we haven't really, because, because to this particular, we would have had to start out with that name on it. Because now you're adding a name to something that somebody has no idea we're talking about. But if you go with the words Main Street, uh, Winter Street Concept, uh, per plan, then.
The report.
Yeah. You've given it a name and, and I understand why you don't wanna call it town center, new town center. And you don't wanna be in the tread on somebody else's belief of what should happen. But you do wanna describe the project. So I think that's the best way to do it.
Yeah, that works. And if we go on with this, we could, we could put that out there for, uh, a naming contest.
With Main Street, Winter Street Concept, AKA also known as Martin's Brook Project or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I can tell David that that's how we're referring to it as the concept. But I think we have also thrown out a couple of sort of aspirational names for what we might start calling it later as it gets further along and more branded. And I think like along the lines of Starlight, that using something that brings, that uses Martin's Brook might also be an option and maybe something for us to think about. Because, I mean, I think Jeremiah, I think the kind of name that you suggest is also kind of along the same lines of, um, you know, not a name that we would necessarily use right now today, but maybe something that could be developed into it as we move this along. Is that?
Yeah.
What you're thinking? Okay. All right. I'm writing all these down. Um, I think for now, for the actual presentation, I'll, you know, tell them to refer to it in the concept way, but I'll, I'll tell them about the other names that we've been talking about. Um, and then in terms of our final destination for this presentation. So I think we were working with David to, to try to get this to a place where we would have a presentation that we could give to the select board in a joint meeting. And I think that that's still our goal. Um, but I wanted to kind of check in with you all about that. Um, is this something, do you want me to take the presentation and mail it to all the owners who haven't necessarily given us an enthusiastic response, but maybe this will get their attention? If we go to the select board, how do we address the question of the private owners aren't really terribly interested? Do we try to have a more public meeting? I, I don't know. I just, I kinda wanted to get your, your read on where we are with this and what our, what our, our goal is to wrap this up.
Kinda like the idea of sending it out to all the owners, but then we have to do something more public. You know, either at a joint selectments meeting or something.
Okay. I mean, I kinda like the idea of sending it to the owners because I feel as though, even though they didn't necessarily respond to my initial inquiries, they maybe owed some kind of follow-up, even if they weren't interested. I don't know. Okay.
I think so. We kinda use it properly. Even if it was on paper.
I mean. I'm sorry, David?
I think that's a good idea, Danielle.
Okay.
It can't hurt. You're just keeping them in the loop.
I'll send it to them. And then at the same time, we can make it known. And I did mention this to the TA today that I, I think we still would like the chance to meet with the select board, give them their presentation, say, this is the project that we took on and this is how it evolved. And this is the presentation. This is what we found. Here are some recommendations and some next steps. I'd like to have David Eisen's, you know, help with that. Um, I, we can't keep him forever. I mean, contract is kinda long expired. So, um, I'd love the chance to be able to include him and not wait too, too long. Um, so I, I mean, is that still something you all want to do? Meet with the select board, you know, when, when they, when they can have us?
Yes.
I think that would be something we should do, Danielle. I agree. But we need to do it. We need to do it fairly quick before they get into budget season. And then they won't wanna talk to us again. You know, we got like two weeks, two weeks, uh, available in their season.
I mean, I don't think we're going in two weeks necessarily.
Well, no, I, I don't mean that quick, but you know what I'm saying? They, they don't, you know, they're not very receptive once they get into budget stuff.
Yeah. I mean, our budget's gonna be due in a few weeks, but the presentations don't really start in earnest for the departments until February, March. So I think we have some time.
Yeah, January, January timeframe is good.
Okay.
Sounds, that sounds like, that sounds, that's what I meant. I mean, I don't wanna get into springtime, cause then we're in trouble.
We're in trouble because I mean, we have a consultant who is not gonna be expected to be hanging on for hours.
No, no, I understand that.
You know, so yeah, I agree. Okay.
We, we need to let him go.
Okay. Do you want to see the final presentation again? I mean, David has made the edits. I know there was some, there were some pieces of feedback, um, given that he's made. Um, I, I, I feel as though I should send, send it to you and show it to you again before it gets mailed to anyone.
You can do it through the share file.
That's always a good thing.
Okay.
Always a good thing.
Give you guys like a week or so to review it before I actually send it. Okay. Okay.
If we, if we don't answer, too bad.
Now, okay.
I like that chuckles, Warren. That was good.
That was all that, I think, I'm sure there's more fun on, but I told you I would only give you three things. So that's all I.
Well, I told you was that response stuff is gonna take longer than your, than your things, Danielle.
Yeah, we all, we also do wanna all stay tuned to, uh, to what's going on with Shailene. I, I mean, you know, we wanna be a united front to make sure that gets squared away the way it should. And we may get a little pushback here and there, um, from developers and so forth, but we need to, uh, we need to forge ahead and get this to all happen.
No, we can't, we can't let the developers push back on us because it's gotta be done right. This is the only shot we got to fix it.
Yeah, I know. So we have to, uh, we have to be united front on that. You have a question, Jeremiah?
Yeah, I, I drove past there and I, you know, exactly feel comfortable driving up into the subdivision to go take a look. Um, what degree should I feel comfortable, you know, going and taking a look at those things?
No, you can go take a look anytime you want.
Yeah, you can drive in there. It's fine. I do it.
Who's gonna, who's gonna say anything to you?
Tell them who you are. That's all, Jeremiah.
Yeah, yeah. All they have to, you know, your, your best bet is if they call the police, you show the police who you are and you're all set.
There are a few, there are a few different homes under construction.
You're an elected official. That's powerful, you know?
Between all the people who are, you know, contractors working on the different homes and the potential, you know, buyers and the people who are moving in, I, it's, they, they see people in and out. It's fine.
Yeah.
You can also go to Nutter Road, although I wouldn't go on anyone's property, but you can view some of the problems from Nutter Road too.
Yeah, you can go knock on 20 and 22's door and say, hey, can I see your backyard? I'm sure they'll let you. You tell them who you are.
Well, the developer still holds covenants. The developer still has covenants and he still owns easements, has easements to all these properties. And so by the very nature that you have the right to go and look, because we have the approval authority for that developer.
Right. And so, so Jeremiah, if you wanna do that on the weekend or something, give me a call. Um, and I'll go over with you if you want, if I have time.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
You know? I've done it before. Warren, Warren took me the first time. So.
Yeah. Well, I've been there, I've been there a lot myself lately. So.
Yeah. Well, no, I don't mean, I don't mean here. The first property that we went and walked on during development, you took me, Warren. You don't, I'm sure you don't remember that, but.
Yeah.
I would just say that on number nine, the people are living there now. So I mean, I wouldn't necessarily show up and go, I mean, you can look from the street, but I, I wouldn't necessarily. Dave Murray has an easement all along the drainage area, but I mean, I wouldn't necessarily go onto their yard without reaching out first, you know? They do live there now. So.
Okay. Well, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Well, if that's it, then we're all set.
Yes. Our next meeting is December 7th. Um.
Well, happy day.
A day that'll live in infamy.
Yep.
How many remembered that? I remembered that.
I did.
Well, you did, Warren. I know you did.
Yeah, military stuff, you know?
That's right.
Yeah.
I will say we had a very nice Veterans Day, uh, service on last Thursday. Uh, Rich gave a nice, uh, speech as long as, along with several others. But it was nice to see the community out for, for that event.
Yeah.
It was, it was a good use of the town center. First time I've been involved in one of those kind of, uh, uh, town serums. So it was really nice.
Hmm. Yeah. What, what did they have? They had, they must have that in the morning, huh?
Yeah, I was 11.
Yeah, yeah. I was all tied up that day. Not much I could do.
Yeah. I've been flat out busy.
No, it was just, it was just good. After the last couple of years, it was nice to see people out together. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Military, uh, you know, military days.
Yeah. Well, good, good. Okay, um, we're all set. We'll see you, uh, if not before on the 7th.
All right. Take care.
Yep. Good night all. Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Same to you. Thanks.
Yep. Yep. Bye bye.
Good night.
Good night.